Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Lackawanna City Council Meeting Caucus for March 18th, 2024. As we indicated at each meeting, the caucus is used for the city council members to discuss amongst ourselves or debate amongst ourselves any of the agenda items. Our department heads are generally here to answer any questions also. There's a little bit of a fiscal change here in the council chambers. Mayor Ifill gave her state of the city address earlier, and of course, we thank her for her presentation and the optimistic outlook again for our city. And we thank her for her continued leadership in that regards. To that end, the first several agenda items are administrative, so we'll start with item number four under Communications from Division Department Heads. From our city clerk, request city council approve use of Senior Citizens Center for early voting, presidential election March 2024, special district election April 2024, primary election June 2024, and general election October and November 2024. Believe that'll accommodate early voting too, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, any council members have any comments or issues with item number four? Moving on to item number five, from our senior foreman, Dan McGurkin, requests the city council approve the purchase of two Ford F-350 pickup trucks in the amount of $51,018, strike at $19 each. Total amount of $102,038. Funds will be taken from the snow equipment budget line. Any council members have any questions or issues with item number five?
Quick question. Are we retiring any of those old vans or going around?
Yes, sir. At the last council meeting, council approved me to get rid of a few old vehicles, yes.
No, no, those old vans, the ones that are real old?
Yes, sir.
Finally getting off the road?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Dan, one other question. I've already discussed this with our city comptroller, Linda Hybicki. You came to the city council for appropriations of approximately $70,000 for repairs to garbage vehicles. Was that, is that, is there any money in any of your accounts that would have covered that? I see your accounts, existing accounts would cover this purchase, right?
Correct. The special, the garbage fund, I believe that's separate funding. Again, I don't believe you can transfer funds from any of our other accounts to the garbage account.
Okay. Well, we're gonna try to get a little better picture on that from our city comptroller. But just out of curiosity, so you have the funds in there?
Yeah, so this, so this funds for the snow equipment budget line is the monies that Erie County pays us to pave, to plow the Erie County roads, Everett Road, Stoner Street Extension. So we're using money out of that. Money in that equipment line could be used for snow removal equipment, which these pickup trucks will be used for.
And these trucks, are they new or are we purchasing them used?
They're brand new.
Okay, from where?
From, yes, yes, sir, from Fierro Auto Team.
Okay. Any, thank you, Dan. Any other council members have any questions or any further discussion on item number five? If not, moving on to item number six from Dan McGurkin. Again, our senior foreman, Public Works. Request city council approve change order number five for the Center Street project in the amount of $115,430.62. This amount is to be paid from the Center Street Capital Project Budget Line. Change order information is attached. We all had a chance to look at that. Briefly, Dan, can you tell us what that represents?
If the council would like, I have Jason Havens on Zoom. If he can explain the change order to you?
Yeah, I think it would be very, very appropriate.
Jason Havens from CPL.
Yeah. Is Jason there?
Yes.
Hey, Jason?
Good evening, how are you guys?
We're good, how are you?
Good, glad you guys can hear me. So I'd be happy to run through this with you guys if you'd like me to kind of dissect how this came to be and the components with which it make it a total value that is actually $67,948.96. So let me just kind of walk through this with you. I got it pulled up on my screen so that I can kind of talk through it as I, as I discuss things with you. The, the general change order in its total will actually be for an increase in project value of $67,948.96. And how that comes to be is towards the bottom of the first page of the change order, where each of the shares has been rectified to the current over and under runs on each of the items for each of the shares. So Share A is the responsibility of the city of Lackawanna. Share B is the responsibility of the Erie County Division of Sewer Management. Share C is the responsibility of the Water Authority. And the alternate bid is the responsibility of Erie County Division of Sewer Management. So as you'll see on the, on the first page of that change order, Share A and Share C each have a increase in contract value. Share B and alternate bid each have a decrease in contract value. So at the bottom of that page, you'll see a representation of each of the shares' values and their totals. So Share A has an increase of $115,430.62. Share C has an increase of $4,994.84 for a total increase on contract of $120,425.46. So that's the increase on the, on the contract. Then there's a decrease in the contract for Share B and the alternate. Those values are $7,646.50 and $44,830 respectively, for a total deduct of $52,476.50. When you combine those two, you get the net increase on contract of $67,948.96. So this request for change order is to essentially do two things. Number one, it's to acknowledge the fact that Share A and C each need an increase for their shares, while Share B and the alternate can receive a decrease to their shares. And the value is denoted. And on page two, you'll see that there is a new contract value that represents the collective of those four shares being added and deducted from each other with a new total on contract of $3,712,457.16. So that is the request that we are making through this change order to allot for the increase to Share A, confirm and acknowledge the requirement for an increase in Share C, which the, the Water Authority has approved, the decrease on contract value for Share B and the alternate, which the Erie County Division of Sewer Management has acknowledged as well. So that's what this change order represents.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Now, is this strictly, is the change order strictly due to the Center Street project? Or is, is it a result of the splash pad also being part of, being addressed at this particular time?
So in this, in this change order, there's no representation specific to, spare with me one second here. Pull up my, my secondary notes, make sure I get this right. There was a previous change order on contract to amend values for the splash pad in the amount of $310,000. That is, is already included in this, this change order's total value that, that you guys already approved last year. So this change order is specific to only the increases to items that were on the base contract that are completely independent of Franklin Park Splash Pad.
Okay, great, thank you, Jason. If you could just stand by in case any of the other council members have any questions, Jason. Any other council members have anything they want to ask, Jason?
Well, just in his defense, what, what percentage is that? The whole job is that amount, very small, right?
Oh, yeah, it's very, it's tiny.
But normally projects are, change orders are much higher, right? I mean, normally. Know what I'm saying?
That's what the change order is for, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's less than 8%.
Right, okay, thank you.
Would this satisfy all of the outstanding expenses for Center Street?
It, it will with the, so, yes, Amira, the, the value on contracts, there's still $400,000 of work to be performed for payment, just to clarify. But there should be no extras that we're anticipating at this time, with the exception possibly of topsoil, as that's the only other item that has been incomplete that may have an overrun.
Anyone else? Jason, I think that's it. Thank you for the explanation. And thank you for being available. Oh, wait, one more question?
Well, he's saying 67.9, and we have a different figure.
Your, the figure that was, was provided to you guys is specific to your share of that change order. But the change order itself needs to, to update the entire contract value.
I got it, okay. So our 115 is what we owe?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? This time for real, Jason, thank you very much. We appreciate you being available, thank you.
All right, take care, have a great night.
Yeah, you too. Any other general discussion on item number six? We got item number seven from our city comptroller. Request approval of ordinance for the use of unappropriate fund balances and transfer of excess budgeted funds within the clerk's budget to increase budget line consulting slash maintenance fees in the amount of $7,893. My understanding is that represents various programs, including the Admin's software program that had been installed in the city clerk's office. Linda, is that accurate?
Yes, and a couple other programming keys, yes.
All right, thank you. Grace, anything else you want to add on that?
No.
Any council members have any questions on item number seven? There's a related ordinance, proposed ordinance attached also. If not, moving on to item number eight from, again, from our city comptroller. Request city council approve an ordinance for the use of unappropriate fund balance to increase fund budgeted in the consultant fees budget line in the amount of $1,000, strike that, $1,594,938 to pay invoices for the January 2024 snowstorm. The invoices were attached. And I know that our city's purchasing agent, Tom Nickmeddo, worked long and hard on having that amount, which was in excess of this, reduced substantially in his negotiations with the various contractors. Linda, anything you want to add on that?
It just relates to the snow removal and towing charges that were incurred during that storm.
The, the snow removals and towing that the city exercised, very effectively, I would add. Thank you. Any council members have any questions on item number eight?
Were any funds issued from state or county?
No, so I reached out to New York State DOT to see if there was any programs, like CHIPS, for example, or anything like that. Our contact there looked for us, and at this time, there's no funding for snow removal in New York State.
And FEMA wasn't an option this, unfortunately, this snowstorm.
No, again, it's a criteria for FEMA, and there's no, and, and we received all the help during the storm through the DLAN system, through Erie County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on item number eight? If not, moving on to item number nine from our city comptroller. Request city council approve an ordinance regarding the replacement of the opioid settlement fund revenue in the budget. Linda, is there anything else you want to add on that?
I just want to segregate it so it sees you track across fiscal years. So moving it over to the capital fund, just to accomplish that.
Great, thank you. Any questions on, on that particular item?
Yeah, does the opioid settlement go to law enforcement traditionally?
I know the initial funds that have come in, the fire department, his purchased equipment to help them respond to certain situations related to opioids.
Okay, so would we bank it for future fire department and law enforcement funds as well, instead of it getting kind of lost in general funds?
Well, that's why I was hoping to segregate it so it wouldn't get overlooked on the.
So it would have its own separate budget line within the general fund?
It would be within the capital fund?
I'm sorry, the capital fund.
Because that's the only way to track it across fiscal years.
Okay.
And Linda, you're asking to do that because of potential reporting requirements that may or may not happen. But in case they do, you'll be ready for it.
Yes, and it's possible that they may need to be reported in certain budgets towards in the general fund, which we could just transfer. But we always have a running tab across all the fiscal years in the capital fund.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on item number nine?
Council President?
Yes, our legal counsel?
I just want to mention there are five to six practical purposes that the monies can be used for. So those five or six items, I can't recite to you right now, but I could get you a list. That's what those funds are usually, or the purpose is to combat the opioid epidemic here in the community. But those five or six items, you know, some are more general as opposed to more specific. But as the council president said, the purpose, I believe what the comptroller is requesting is more for tracking purposes so the city knows that those funds are going to those six items in the meant to be purpose.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any questions?
I'm assuming this money would be used for education, Narcan, different things of that nature?
Yes.
All right, okay. Okay, anyone else? If not, moving on to item number 10 from the City Attorney Director of Development and Marketing. Request approval of the proposed cannabis ordinance regulating cannabis uses in the city of Lackawanna in accordance with New York State law. What I'm suggesting we do is because of the interest in this particular topic and the complexity of it, I know Chuck Clark and John Gunn have, have worked diligently and thoroughly on this matter to prepare a substantial ordinance addressing this issue, together with a map that our building inspectors helped put together, and they did a fantastic job also. I'm going to suggest that we have that presentation during the general meeting. I, I think it'll be preserved as, on Zoom for posterity, as well as that would hit a larger audience and for people not here to observe the presentation while they're at home or in the future. You're okay with that, John and Chuck, if you're okay with that?
No problem.
And if the city council members are okay with that?
Yeah.
And then we'll pose whatever questions during the general meeting.
Yeah, John, John will be prepared to answer those.
Yes.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to item number 11 from Director Laxo, Director of Parks and Recreation. Request city council approve this recommendation of Snowplow Doctor for mowing and landscaping bid. Even though the bid was not the lowest, they have an exemplary record providing quality service to the city of Lackawanna. The bids are as follows, pardon me. Western New York Materials, $1,764 a week. Emerald Dunes, $1,616 a week. Snowplow Doctor, $1,955 a week. Five Star Plowing and Landscaping, $1,858 a week. And the recommendation from Director Laxo is that Snowplow Doctor, $1,955 a week. Director Laxo, since this is not the lowest bid, obviously you have other reasons. You cited some here for selecting the Snowplow Doctor. Could you tell us your basis, the basis of your decision to make that recommendation?
Yeah, there are a few things that need to be addressed. Firstly, you mentioned the weekly charge per service, but it is broken down. Each, each bid is by ward from first through fourth. I just wanted to call a typographical error to your attention. Five Star Plowing and Landscaping, their fourth ward bid is not $485, it's $585. So that's the first item on the agenda. We had a few discussions, myself and Attorney Gunn, regarding this matter. And it was brought to my attention that the low bid in the third and fourth ward coming from Emerald Dunes, an individual, I mean, this literally just came to my attention within the last half hour. Prior to my appointment in my position, this outfit was hired to do work and had to be replaced because of inconsistent work efforts where areas were not getting mowed. And we brought in the Snowplow Doctor to relieve them along with another agency that did not submit a bid. If indeed we are, you know, beholden to the lowest bid, that would make Snowplow Doctor the low bid in the third and fourth ward outside of Emerald Dunes. And we are looking at Western New York Materials. They, they were, by a fairly significant margin, the low bid in the first and second ward. I have no track record of dealing with them. So it's, it's difficult for me to make a recommendation to go with somebody that I've never seen, you know, do the work. But the law is the law. So I don't know if perhaps my recommendation needs to be amended or resubmitted or what the will of the council might be. But if we are indeed obligated by law to accept the lowest bid in two of the four wards, I would have to amend my recommendation.
I don't think you can break the bids down by ward. It's a total of weekly, the weekly cost, first of all. Secondly, I, I think there are other bases to be considered here, right, John?
There are other bases, but it, it, you know, some made way more than others. Meaning past poor client service is a big indicator of, you know, I don't care what you're bidding here, you know, we have a track record with you and it's poor. So in fact, we had to go and hire someone to clean up your mess. So that, to me, if I'm the decision maker, that weighs high upon the, you know, I have experience with you. But it's integrity. Do you have the resources? Do you, are you punctual? Do you do good work, the craftsmanship? So all those factors come into play when you're deciding. Council President, I disagree with, I believe you can issue via by ward as opposed to the entire district. So technically, in this case, in the way that Director Laxo laid out, the council can permit two wards to one bid and two wards to the other because they are the lowest bids.
I would suggest that possibly, and I don't mean to interrupt you, right? I, I would almost question if, if a bidder is bidding on four wards and you only, they only get two because they are the lowest of those particular wards, and being excluded in the other two wards, would they still be interested in the contract?
I don't know.
Well, there's two facets to what you're saying. I know historically, this wasn't even a ward by ward bid. It was a parcel by parcel bid. Like, there were six to eight different parcels in the third ward, and they were bid individually. And then that was compiled to make it more orderly, you know, word by word. But to your point, my concern in letting a known entity go because the price is higher leads me to be concerned that if the quality of work that we receive from these unknown quantities is not up to our standards, are we going to have the ability to rehire this group that is going to have to move on to other bids and won't be able to service us because they don't have the manpower or the equipment that they normally would have been able to afford us?
Let me ask you this, Brian. This, this isn't the first time we've awarded these contracts for the mowing. Last year, did, did the Snowplow Doctor get the award?
He did.
And it was based on the same recommendation, the same qualities that you just recited here earlier about their ability to get the job done and done well?
Yeah, that's, that's how it worked last year and in previous years.
And they got all four wards, correct?
They got all four wards, correct. There, there have been other concerns that were brought to me by the law department. And I want to make certain, that's obviously not my area of expertise. I want to make certain we're doing things above board.
Sure.
But our past practice has been to hire them because of their exemplary work record and the fact that they have not only done their work in an exemplary manner, but they have brought lesser work up to our standards in a relief capacity.
Yeah.
They weren't the lowest bid last year either.
No, well, again, the concerns that are brought up by our current law department were not brought up by the past law department. So it wasn't, upon my appointment in this job, I was informed that we were not beholden to the low bid. But my, the explanation of what the special circumstances were to make that the case were not really complete. So if I was operating from a, a point where I wasn't on stable ground from a, you know, according to state law, it, it was nothing that I was aware of at the time of making that decision.
John, I guess it comes back to you. What is, what is your recommendation here then? Should we revisit this, maybe table this? Or do we, are we on solid ground? Even, we've even done this in the past based on the, the track record exhibited by this particular contractor. It was, they were awarded the contract at least last year. I don't know about the year before. But if you don't feel comfortable with giving us a recommendation to go along those same lines, even though the, the quantifying element of the lowest bid is not the only decisive factor here, are we on solid grounds to go to the work quality, experience and, and relationship that we've had in the past, knowing their work product? So are the, either, either your recommendation maybe to, to table this and further discussion? Or are we on solid ground to go forward with approving a, a recommendation?
Sure, one issue that I would like to look at is whether you could split it among wards, which I'm pretty confident, but it's opposite of what you thought.
Well, my, my point is, if they're not going to get all four wards, they may have lowballed a couple of the wards because they wanted to bury those costs in the other wards.
Correct.
And, and so if you take the other wards away from them, does, I don't, I don't think they're going to come back with those same figures.
Yeah.
Personally, but I could be wrong.
No, I think you have to look at that. I, I would ask that the council table it. And if we need to schedule a special meeting, so be it. But I'll look up the concerns and I'll make sure everybody is aware of what I believe the answers are.
Go ahead. There are two items I wanted to bring up. First off, I, I mentioned that I was informed of a past subpar work record from Emerald Dunes. I just want everyone to be made aware of the fact that this is not a firsthand, my firsthand knowledge of this. Apparently, there are payment records that, that would be available in the comptroller's office that reflect that they were the high bidder at one point prior to my appointment and had to be relieved. But I do not have any of those records. Again, this is late in the game where I was, when that information was given to me. But I do not have any firsthand knowledge. I don't want to be sitting here telling the world that Emerald Dunes does poor work because I don't have any record of that. B, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and we're not taking as, as, as that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. B, and I think this might have been addressed by the city attorney. If we do table this, it's three weeks until our next meeting. And I, if we drag our feet on this, the law could be pretty unsightly by the time we get around to making the decision. So if we could. So if we could get it done before the three weeks, I don't know what mechanisms are in place, but it could get ugly and kind of open up another can of worms if we drag our feet on this.
We'd have to do a special meeting.
I know Kausman Sirdike has a question. I'll go back to your question of, I do understand a consideration of whether or not to split the wards could affect the total final service. And that would be a characteristic or category for the council to consider. So if that has weight, really doesn't matter when I look up or not. So you could actually address the entire motion today. But that would be a decision that the council would have to, so are we going to split or do we give it to one? And do we go with the low bid in the third and fourth wards? Or do you go with the low bid in the first and second? Or are they split?
Quite frankly, I don't think they can be split. It may be legal to do that. I don't think the individual contractors anticipated that being the case. Because if you've got four different bidders and each one of them is cheaper in a ward, give them the one ward they're the cheapest at, give the next ward to the next cheapest one, give the third contractor to the next cheapest one, and then you've got four contractors and there's one, a different contractor in each ward, based on the cheapest price. I don't think they do business that way, quite frankly.
But they bifurcated their bid anyways. They understood when they placed their bid that it's individualized per ward. So it shouldn't be a sudden surprise to them.
How was the bid worded?
Oh, I don't have the bid paperwork in front of me. I know that in the past, split bids have been awarded prior to my arrival. Since I've arrived here, you know, in my position, it's been consolidated that one group did the whole city. But I know that prior to my appointment, there were split bids.
Really?
And not ward by ward, parcel by parcel. I don't know how that was put into place, but that could have been a part of why we ran into problems in the first place.
All right. Can I say something?
Go ahead.
Sure. Thank you. So I would think Emerald Dunes is out because they have a bad track record. But Western New York Materials, they're low on the first two, right?
Correct.
And, you know, how are they going to get their foot in the door here or somebody new? Do you know what I'm getting at? And maybe create some competition so that next year we have, you know?
I understand that. I don't, I don't have any reason to tell you that they do not do good work. But again, I find it difficult to recommend that we do work based on blind faith and a low price. But I do see your point. I understand your point. And I submitted my recommendation, but again, you know, I don't know if it needs to be amended if we want to go with a low bid or how we want to do this. But I understand your point completely.
They bid on individual wards. Apparently they're.
Well, we would have to see what the bid notice, however, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
John?
It's also, it's the bid notice, but it's also the procurement policy in the city. And I believe that actually both have to coincide.
You don't have to take the lowest. I knew that from my, from the housing authority.
Yeah, and we haven't done it as council. We didn't do it last year either. But if you suggest we table this for more information, then we might have to have a special meeting so that time doesn't run and the lawns don't get overgrown.
Correct. Unfortunately, I believe you should table it. Let me get the appropriate information before you and then you can decide.
Okay.
We see if they're willing to split it up, you know?
Yeah.
Whatever you said, if you don't know how it was bid up to.
Yeah, exactly.
But I mean, if I may, why should it rely on the contractor to agree or disagree? Shouldn't that ultimately be our decision? Okay, if you're not willing to take just a specific ward or two, then we go to the next one. Because I don't think they should, I don't think they should dictate how the business, how the city handles business.
Well, if you award X contractor for the first ward and they don't want to do it, then you have to have another meeting to award the next bidder?
No, because we would, we would, we would agree that, we would agree on the basis of if they accept, otherwise Plan B. Why can't we just pre?
In the alternative, you mean?
Yeah. In the alternative that, for example, I'm just going to throw it out there, Western New York Materials, we say they get first and second ward. In the event that they don't agree to just take two wards, then we go with Emerald Dunes. We already have established in our own record, and then we execute it however we see fit based on their acceptance or rejection at our special meeting.
So we go from Plan A to Plan B to Plan C to Plan D on each ward?
I know, it's like a business plan.
Well, you could put together the business plan.
I'll do it. It's not that difficult. But it would be just a conversation based on the recommendations or what we find out from the attorney and then any other information that we get from the comptroller's office in regards to Emerald Dunes. And that could have been 10 years ago where they were operating with less staff, less material, I'm sorry, less equipment. Things change over the years. I think people should get a shot, a fair shot or fair bite at the apple in the event that they're able to deliver. Because I have to admit, with Snowplow Doctor, there were issues in the first ward specifically with Vetland Park and with the soccer field. Maybe it was too much for him to take on. It happens. To be granted the whole city, you have to be extremely precise and be able to accommodate. And divvying up the city into two businesses, I don't think is that big of a deal as far as loss, profit loss for the business.
Brian?
Just, I think those issues in the first ward never brought to my attention. I don't know, anytime we've had any sort of issues, because there were a couple of times when people last year called, they're not cutting the playground swings, you know, the area inside, that's not what their contracted work is, that was their TPW. There are other times when the grass was too tall at playgrounds for some people's tastes. It was after eight days of rainstorms and they couldn't get to it, otherwise they would be ruining the property they were supposed to be maintaining. So every time that we've had an issue with them, it has been quickly addressed and professionally addressed. And only on one occasion where garbage was mowed over instead of being picked up, and that was immediately rectified. Only one time was it actually the fault of the Snowplow Doctor. So, you know, without me having firsthand knowledge, I can't know if that was actually their fault or not.
I understand. It's just that not everything is reported. I visit the parks and I didn't find it necessary at the time to address them. But it may be a lot for one company to handle.
Again, you know, the complaints have been minimal. So that's all I could go by.
All right. The thought is to table it and everybody's got to vote, decide what you want to do. Let's move on. Brian, thank you. John, thank you. Communication from Citizens, Lackawanna Board of Education, request city council through Houston City Citizen Center and Patsy Court from May 21st, 2024, school board budget election, 12 noon till 9:00 PM. Anyone have any comments on that? Item 13, we'll take this up during a regular meeting, communications from John Ingram. Item number 14, Lackawanna Fire Department, Benavol Association, request city council approve use reserve pumper truck for Lackawanna Buffalo Annual Dingo State Parade on April 1st, 2024. That's a regular, right, Brian?
So the Dingo State Parade?
Yeah.
I have not.
Yeah, it's a regular.
Yeah, okay.
Been doing this for a long time.
Yeah. Anyone, any council members have any questions? Item 14. If not, moving on, item 15, Kimsooth Resident, request city council approve closure of Alcott Street from Steelwana West Side of Olden Lane for Spring Fest and Easter Eve Gathering. It will be held, held on Saturday, March 23rd, 2024 for 12:00 PM, 3:00 PM. Lackawanna Municipal Housing Authority has approved the closure, spoke with Mark Kuick, director, he's okay with it. And this is an annual event, very nice for the kids. Any, anyone have any thoughts or questions or issues with item number 15? If not, entertainment licenses, Lake Erie Club and Winfield Pub Restaurant, Class One entertainment licenses, and then a motion to adjourn after that. I'm formally calling to order the March 18th, 2024 city council meeting, please staff for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, just as for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, especially for the residents at home just tuning in, we were graced by our city mayor, Mayor Iñada Ifalla, who was here earlier to give this state of the city address, very optimistic, very accomplished. And we, obviously a city council, thank you for your continued leadership, Mayor Ifalla. Thank you.
Good to meet you, Mr. President.
And thank you for giving the address here in the council chambers. Now I would caution out everybody again, the, these proceedings are being recorded. Grace, would you take the role?
Maflahee?
President.
Anderson?
Here.
Moretti?
Here.
Sirdai?
President.
Morano?
Here.
Law Department?
Here.
Development and Marketing?
Here.
Public Works?
Here.
Public Safety?
Here.
Comptroller?
Here.
Recreation?
Here.
Hearings from citizens?
None, chief? Okay, thank you.
Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of March 4th, 2024.
Morano moves to adopt minutes of regular meeting, March 20, strike that, March 4th, 2024 is written.
Maflahee, seconds. Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of March 4th, 2024 as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Departmental reports, one through three.
Morano moves to receive and file departmental reports, one, two, three, inclusive.
Anderson, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file departmental reports, one through three, inclusive. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City clerk requests the city council approve the use of the senior citizen center for early voting, presidential election, March of 2024, special district election, April 2024, primary election, June 2024, and general election, October, November 2024. Lease agreement is attached.
Morano moves to approve request.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Senior foreman of Public Works requests the city council approve the purchase of two new Ford F-350 pickup trucks in the amount of $51,019 each, total amount of $102,038. Funds will be taken from the snow equipment budget line.
Morano moves to approve request.
Second, Sirdai.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdai, to approve request. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Senior foreman of Public Works requests the city council approve change order number five for the Center Street project in the amount of $115,430.62. This amount is to be paid from the Center Street Capital Project Budget Line. Change order information is attached.
Morano moves to approve request.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve request. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City comptroller requests approval of an ordinance for the use of unappropriated fund balance and transfer of excess budgeted funds within the clerk's budget to increase budget line consulting maintenance fee in the amount of $7,893.
Morano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file act on ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinances, transferring $7,893 to budget code city clerk consulting maintenance fees, $3,393 to be transferred from unappropriated fund balance, $2,000 from the city clerk travel allowance, $2,500 from the city clerk codification budget code.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City comptroller requests city council approve an ordinance for the use of unappropriated fund balance to increase funds budgeted in the consulting fees budget line in the amount of $1,594,938 to pay invoices for the January 2024 snowstorm. Invoices are attached.
Morano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Maflahee, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to receive and file act on ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinances to transfer unappropriated fund balance in the amount of $1,594,938 to budget code engineering consulting fees.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Amira.
Yes. Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City comptroller requests city council approve an ordinance regarding the placement of the opioid settlement fund revenue in the budget.
Morano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Second, Sirdai.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdai, to receive and file act on ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance amending the 2023-2024 budget ordinances, adding the budget code opioid settlement fund to the capital fund and to transfer opioid settlement revenues to the transfer to other fund capital budget code.
Morano moves to adopt ordinance as written.
Second, Sirdai.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdai, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City attorney and director of development and marketing requests approval of the proposed cannabis ordinance regulating cannabis uses in the city of Lackawanna in accordance with New York state law.
As was indicated during our caucus, we postponed discussion amongst ourselves, the city council, of this particular item so that it could be done at the, at our general meeting, which is now. And I would ask Chuck Clark, who was helped author, and our city attorney, John Gawn, who also helped author the legislation, and our billing inspectors who helped prepare the map to discriminate certain areas for this particular enterprise. You're welcome to come forward and you have the floor.
Thank you. I will start and John can jump in wherever he feels appropriate. So for those of you who were not here at the time, the state's marijuana law, Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act gave municipalities until December 31st of 2021 to opt out. If you opted out, there was a provision in that law that you could come back in. But if you decided not to opt out, you were in, and you did not have the ability to opt out again. So Lackawanna, at the time, made a conscious decision to not opt out. So we are in, okay? So the legislation that you, or the, I'm sorry, the ordinance that you have in front the ordinance that you have in front of you is a collective effort among development, law, and code enforcement, which takes the 12 licensed cannabis activities governed by the state and applies them to the states, to the cities, excuse me, eight development zones. Okay? So in summary, quick summary, what we're suggesting is that no cannabis activity be allowed in any residential neighborhood, whether that's a clear residential neighborhood or a mixed residential neighborhood, period, nothing. In the case of the highly popular retail dispensaries and onsite consumption, we would potentially allow that activity in three areas. The central business district, the neighborhood commercial district, and regional commercial. And I'll explain why I'm saying potentially in a minute. All other licensing types, nurseries, cultivation, warehouse, co-ops, things of that nature, would be limited to the three other zones that we have, which are mixed commercial and industrial. And what is referred to here is the Bethel redevelopment area, but that's also, that's Renaissance Commerce Park and the area just outside the Commerce Park where super sourcing operates. Okay? So the reason I use the term potentially allowable is that the ordinance, with John's help, has a number of overlays to it, which make it pretty strict. So we would be looking at requiring zoning board approval with the issuance of a special use permit. We'd also be looking at planning board approval, not only for concurrence of the special use permit, but the normal site plan review that a planning board does. Most importantly is our ordinance mirrors and overlays certain restrictions based on state law that protect certain vulnerable and other areas. So for example, you cannot be within another, with 1,000 feet of another cannabis facility. You can't be within 500 feet of a child or youth center or a treatment center. You cannot be within 500 feet of a school property. You cannot be within 200 feet of a house of worship. And you cannot be in a historical district at all. So when you overlay all of those things into our ordinance, our restrictions are compliant with state law, allowable in certain areas, but also give enough teeth to make sure that we can control the activity. And what this map shows, and I want to thank Scott Aysk, Steve Baylen, and Mustafa Muhammad, who took some pretty significant information and laid this onto a grid for us. And then to the people at home, this is nothing but a bunch of colors. We will post a picture of this in the comments section of the video. But what you see, the color codes, the light blue represents schools, green represents playgrounds, purple represents cannabis facility. I'll explain that in a bit. The pink represents houses of worship. And the orange and yellow represent single-family and mixed residential neighborhoods, respectively. So the purpose of this map was to help give us a visual of how these overlays would be applied. And you'll see.
According to New York State as well. So I want everybody to be aware that this map was transposed as a result of New York State's law, not a result of development and the legal department putting together an ordinance, then putting this together. So these colors reflect the restrictions that are the floor set by New York State.
So in other words, if we did nothing, if you chose not to act, state law prevails. And this is what it would look like anyway. Okay? So just a couple of examples, and I won't go through every one. But let's just take the central business district, for example, which is represented where I'm moving my finger here. So Our Lady of Victor Basilica is here. All these red blocks would be potentially central business district locations. But as you can see, there is a blue square, or blue circle radius around them for the school and the church. At Electric and Ridge, there's also an OLV services-related education building. So there's another one. And then if you go further west, Upridge Road, you have Memorial Field and the library. So while the central business district would be a logical place for perhaps a dispensary or an onsite consumption location, you will see that the restrictions automatically prohibit that from happening. Take another example. Let's go into the first ward here. So you'll see a lot of single-family housing. You'll see a lot of green in here, a lot of playgrounds. Tagger, Bowder, Lee I., so on. And then you'll also see other school locations. And you've got a number of parishes in here, or mosques, or other places of worship. So it's not just a church. It's any place of worship, doesn't matter the denomination. It is all covered by this. You look at Bethel Park, for example. Bethel Park would be completely protected between its residential community and the playground. So pretty much nothing there. I will illustrate for you this purple circle because we do have one individual who's in the process of getting licensed, both from the state and then he will come back and do his compliance here with the city. For illustrative purposes, we put this in here. If he were to succeed and get all of his requirements completed, the 1,000-foot radius around his location at Dona and Route 5 would pretty much prohibit anything within this radius, including at the tip of the Commerce Park at Dona and Route 5. So when I say precluded, it's anything, whether it's retail dispensary or any cannabis activity within 1,000 perimeter of a location, there's nothing. So again, I could go on and on. If I were to articulate for you an estimate of where we may allow places, obviously along Route 5, there might be possibilities for one or two, potentially to the southern part of South Park Avenue, potentially, and possibly to the area in the vicinity of Abbott and Dorans, where the Abbott Road Plaza is. One point I do want to make, an additional point I want to make about the playground restrictions is that's not only our playgrounds, but if you look here at this top corner, this is the border of Lackawanna and West Seneca. And there is a playground just east of the plaza. So if you go from that pinpoint and do your 500 perimeter, you are pretty much cutting into the area of the plaza where the Save-A-Lot and some of those locations are. So again, if there were any activity that would be potentially possible in this area of the old plaza, it would be at the area of Ridge and Dorans to the, to the western end of the plaza. So one other point, and I'll be quiet and let John chime in where I didn't catch everything. The Commerce Park and the old Bethel redevelopment area, you will probably, you will never see onsite consumption. You will never see a retail dispensary there. But it's entirely possible that somewhere along the way, somebody may come to the county consortium that runs, that owns the land, that then would ultimately come to us to ask for things like a warehouse, or a cultivation area, or a distribution center, or a co-op, which is kind of an all-encompassing activity. It's possible. However, we all know from dealing with the county and being an active part of this process that everything that goes in there is always highest and best use of the land. There's two criteria for that. One is obviously, you know, tax base. The other one is jobs. So if there were two projects competing with each other, and the cannabis warehouse only brought you 10 jobs, and there was another operation like Magic Eraser that would bring you 75, the board would recommend taking the 75. Nothing wrong with cannabis project, but you're bringing 75 jobs, both tax-based. So that is pretty much all I've got to say on the matter. I guess the one closing point that I will say to you is, as you can tell by some of the dates that have been tossed around, we're a little bit behind. We obviously had some turnover in the development director role past couple of years. We had a retirement in the City Attorney's Office. No excuses. The reality is, we are where we are. And neighboring communities like town of West Seneca, City of Buffalo, they've had ordinances in places for well over a year already. Okay? So it would behoove us to, whether it's what's in front of you or some variation, to act sooner than later because Grace, in her new role, is one of the first places that, once the state opens the floodgates again with a new round of approvals, the Clerk's office will be one of the first places that gets hit, followed then by code enforcement. So this is, this is as much an issue about having laws in place just for the purposes of catching up, but it's also to allow city government to operate in an efficient way. John, did I catch everything?
You did. I would, I would just add that, look at the purple circles and see that not only does it affect you within the boundaries of the city of Lackawanna, but also from neighboring towns, if they put those purple circles on, like arterial ways around the city of Lackawanna, that also affects the ability or inability for the city to have these streams of revenue. So in, as a result of the cannabis shops, the city government ends up getting 3% of their gross income on an annual basis. So that's something, you're weighing the revenue stream versus not in my backyard, right? That's why, because the community, a lot of this community is split, literally, on the issue. But what do you do? Well, it may be in your backyard anyhow, based on a fake, not a fake, but a transparent geographical line. And then the city isn't getting the revenue. So that's one point. Another point is there are vape shops, tobacco shops, and the like in Western New York, where you see making the news that they're getting busted for selling cannabis out the back door. That's something that you want to think about in preventing. And Councilman Sirdai provided most recent information from the New York State budget that will go for voting soon, where they want to increase the ability for the local town to increase fines to prosecute entities that are selling cannabis illegally and to allow the local government to handle that aspect. So that's going to be on the cutting edge. And if passed by New York State, obviously, in the few weeks to follow, then something should be amended here in the city if, in all due course, this city ordinance passes as proposed. As Chuck said, city Lackawanna is a little behind the times, and it's time to move forward from that aspect. And lastly, that's it. That's it. That's all I had. That's nice. Thank you both for the brilliant effort to get it done.
And if I have one more comment to add, I didn't finish my thought on when I was going through locations. If we had to make an estimate of how many of these shops might be in the city, all-inclusive of these regulations, no more than three or five. Just by virtue of, just the 1,000 perimeter alone is a showstopper in and of itself, not to mention all the other vulnerable place overlays. So between Route 5, southern part of South Park, potentially the northern end of Abbott Road, you're pretty much at a max of three to five. Of course, unless there's variances or other considerations, but as these things overlay, that would be it.
Right. So I did think my last comment, I'm sorry. Chuck, you never left. We should have never went.
I'm happy to look.
My last comment was going to be the 200 feet within houses of worship. First of all, it's all houses of worship. Second, excuse me, the city can see how 200 feet work, and then eventually move it out 500 feet. Or you could, the, the New York State is the floor, but the city can be more restrictive if it wants eventually. But then if there is a cannabis dispensary within the area that's following the 200 feet, but are within 250 feet, you know, they would argue, well, our grandfather did, and you can't kick us out of this area, blah, blah, blah. And that may be something, but I know houses of worship for all the wards are an important aspect. And 200 feet doesn't seem that restrictive. With that, the council has to consider that as well.
And there's one other point to that, is in a, like, take the case of Our Lady of Victor, where you have a church and a school. The, the school, the higher distance takes priority. So in the case of Paul, we keep mentioning that, but in the case of that, it would be the 500 foot around the school.
I see.
That's good.
Or if the school closes, like a lot of the other Catholic schools close, then it reverts back to 200 feet?
Right. But if, but if the, so the special use permit, well, they would have not gotten a special use permit. So if the school, if that old building becomes a school again, it would, it would re-up in the 500. But if it was a vacant building and became, but if it became a community center, then it, then it could potentially be 500. If it became a food pantry, that would be a community center type of thing. So it would all depend on what the future purpose of the building. But yes, let's just say the school went away. Yeah, school went away. School went away, not active, and all you have is a house of worship. Then it reverts to the, to the house of worship.
So, so far, as far as the Basilica, National Shrine, we, we could put something in there that they're not allowed within a national shrine.
Well, you, you raise a very good point. So to my understanding, and again, you know, been at this all of 60 days, I don't believe the city has anything designated as a historical district. The Basilica is a historical building, but the area around it has not necessarily termed a historical district. And if you see within the legislation, no cannabis activity can be within a historic district. So if that's something we wanted to consider, maybe not now, but in the future, as all of that continued development grows, we may want to consider this area of the Basilica as a district.
Right. So as, as this goes, with all those circles, you're going to need more money in next year's budget for colored pens.
Colored pens, new graphics, and.
That's a great job. That looks awesome. Can, can anybody put a store or a shop within where the soul, I guess, around there? That's, that's, I think that's an important point.
It's nearly impossible.
Nearly?
It's nearly impossible.
Okay.
There's a, again, you know, we would, we would want to go with it. I mean, do these exactly, but this is a pretty good rendering. There's a really small opportunity at Nason Parkway and South Park. So you look, see this little opening here?
Yeah.
So pretty much you're flat here, you got a little gap here. But again, we, we as a zoning board have the ability to, to, to not, to not allow. Just because there's a gap there doesn't mean it's an automatic layup, right? The zoning board overlay gives you the opportunity to hear the case. And if they feel justified that the overlays that are here don't require, don't allow that to go forward safely, they can deny it. And if it gets denied by the zoning board, it never goes through the rest of the process.
Thank you.
Are municipalities on the outskirts responsible to inform Lackawanna if a dispensary opens up at our doors?
Ideally, yes.
There, there's a-
Ideally, yes. Yeah, so our, our code enforcement guys, um, have done a good job of, of being in touch with code enforcement people in, in their neighboring municipalities. Uh, you know, John is, is making his inroads on the legal side, I'm making my inroads on the development side. Um, so collectively, yes, but again, it doesn't mean that it will always happen, but the intent is there.
Thank you.
John, we could go back and amend this later as far as, say, if I see the hours are, till 1:00 AM at night. You know, if we have a problem, we can change it to 10 o'clock or something in the future, or?
Absolutely, you could amend the ordinance.
Yeah, okay, so I, I figured that.
You, you as a body can amend this as many times you feel appropriate.
Let, let the public know also.
Yeah, and amend it as long as New York State's rules are still the floor. Any further restrictions that a municipality put on, that's okay, but you still have to abide by New York State, you can't be in conflict with New York State's law.
Right, we, like you mentioned earlier, as far as illegal, this is for legal stuff. Now, for illegal operations, we can come up with something after the budget's passed as far as the fines or, or police, you know, what I sent you the other night, yeah.
Correct, so actually I would have the city consider in the future a vape tobacco and smoke shop ordinance, where it is crystal clear that they are not to sell cannabis.
Thank you.
And, and each business coming into the city would have to, uh, file for a business license also, which gives the council some jurisdiction also.
Not if they're illegal, if you're illegally, yeah, right.
All set, Fred?
I, I am all set, and again, thank you, John, thank you Chuck for your-
Thank you.
Presentation.
Hard efforts, and as, as well as the building inspectors who participated in this, great job. Right, request approval of both cannabis ordinance, regulating cannabis uses in Lackawanna in accordance with New York State law, Miranda moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance, second, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike to receive and file Act on Ordinance, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance permitting regulated cannabis uses in accordance with New York State law for cultivators, processors, distributors, and retail dispensaries.
Miranda moves to adopt ordinance as written?
Second, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike to adopt ordinance as written, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of Parks and Recreation requests city council approve his recommendation of Snowplow Doctor for the mowing and landscaping bid, even though their bid was not the lowest. They have an exemplary record and provide a quality service for the city of Lackawanna.
Miranda moves to table request.
Second, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike to table request, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Lackawanna Board of Education requests the city council approve the use of the Senior Citizen Center in Bochi Court for the May 21st, 2024 School Board and Budget Election from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Miranda moves to approve request.
Maflahee, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee to approve request, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero.
John Ingram, you want to come forward and address the council for your request?
Good evening, John Ingram, 25 Church Street. My question is, um, I watched the last council meeting, um, concerning Sapphire Services. And I knew y'all had a special meeting, I had a special meeting. Has this issue been resolved?
Um, what do you mean it's just?
As far as like, but, um, what I couldn't, just watching the council meeting and then being here at present, this has been some kind of a very heated issue. And sometimes there, from the outside looking in, sometimes it looked like it was personal. And I'm, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying as, as an outside person watching, whatever. And being that something, I couldn't understand why, if, so, I believe the number was like $17,000, if I'm correct, or whatever, $17,000, and, and it was supposed to be helping, um, facilitate it. So I went and asked, being nosy, I'm just saying, being nosy, I went and asked the controller, um, what is the, if we don't, if you don't get this money, well, we're in trouble. Um, if work can get done, you know? I don't understand why it's such a-
Well, obviously, based on the votes, John, there are some members of the council who are concerned about the expenditure of funds for, to bring in a, a separate entity to do accounting work that, that may, we, that some members may think should be done in-house. So there's an expenditure of funds that some may feel are unreasonable.
Can I ask, I'm just asking, because I know that's a form, I used to always, if I had a special interest about something, and I'd come and I would go find a person, sit there talking, run this through me before, because this is what I'm going to ask at the council. This is what I'm, I'm going to ask specifically. And I'm asking, have y'all done that, you know, have y'all spoken?
I, I think, I think we have. I can't speak for everybody, but I, I know everybody's pretty much interested in this very topic.
And I'm just saying that the person looking, I was sometime, when it perceived outside, it may not, it may not look like it, but it looked very, for the first time, I felt, I felt like I was in the past a little bit, you know what I'm saying? And I couldn't understand it, and that's just my concern, and I could be 100% wrong, that's just me. But, and, and that's, and that's the question I wanted to ask.
Well, thank you for hearing Chris on that.
My other question is, and I'm never going to stop, this bus, the bus stop. The bus stop across the street, last week, there was a truck as big almost as this is, blocking the bus stop. Blocking the bus stop where if a handicapped person or a person in a wheelchair couldn't get in, he would have to go here, she could not, have to go in the middle of the street, or the bus stop couldn't drop the lift, whatever. I came, I came over here, I went to the police, they said, you need to send a police officer to tell them to move that truck from there. I waited till the bus that was going downtown coming, and till the bus that was going to South coming, nobody never came. I'm saying this because I've seen on more than one occasion where somebody almost got hurt waiting on that, by the buses. Some of these drivers do not care where they park in front of the buses, whatever. Some of these people don't care when they, when they, when they do the bus. I'm concerned because I ride the buses, I know a lot of seniors that live over here ride the buses. And nobody should be that comfortable, that comfortable to say, we don't have to worry about our police stopping us or writing a ticket, or coming to say something, move. That should not happen, you know? So I'm asking you, and I'm asking, make sure that it doesn't happen. Because what are you going to say if somebody get hurt? I'm sorry, and so, oh, now we're going to do something? When, if we're riding across the street and they're blatantly just not respecting our, blatantly not respecting us, because that's what they're doing, they should be paying, they should pay a fine that they could never forget. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, John.
And again, thank you.
And Director Marocco, are you familiar with this incident?
That was the first I've heard of it, but I certainly will talk to, uh, the police and, uh, make sure that they, they take action if they have a complaint of this kind.
John, you, you may want to follow up with Director Marocco next time for an answer.
Again, no disrespect, I'm just, I'm just-
And we appreciate that, thank you. Miranda moves to receive and file.
Anderson.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson to receive and file, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Lackawanna Fire Department Benevolent Association requests the city council approve the use of the reserve pumper truck for Lackawanna and Buffalo Annual Dean's Day Parade on April 1st, 2024.
Miranda moves to approve request.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti to approve request, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Kim Smith resident requests city council approve the closure of Alcott Street from Steellana to the west side of Olin Lane for Spring Fest and Easter egg gathering. It will be held on Saturday, March 23rd, 2024, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Lackawanna Municipal Housing Authority has approved the closure.
Miranda moves to approve request, refer to Director of Public Safety, uh, DPW, and Public Works, obviously.
Maflahee, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee to approve request, refer to Director of Public Safety and to Public Works. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Entertainment licenses, class one live music and mechanical reproduction, Lake Area Italian Club, located at 3200 South Park Avenue, and Winfield's Pub Restaurant located at 1213 Ridge Road.
Miranda, Miranda moves to approve, uh, both entertainment, uh, applications.
Second, sir.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike to approve both class one entertainment licenses, inclusive, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero.
As far as the council, any, uh, old business, they have items, anything we should discuss? Not Morano moves to adjourn.
Maflahee, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee to adjourn meeting, Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero.
All right, that's a wrap, good night everyone, thank you very much.